Good morning. We'll call the meeting of the Community Health and Safety Committee to order. The second item on the agenda is public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to address the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes? Moved by Commissioner Bujack, supported by Commissioner Merchant. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The minutes from April 22nd, 2025 are adopted or approved. Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation from the Health Department regarding their annual report. With us is Dr. Adam London, administrative health officer for Kent County. Mr. London, thanks for being here. We look forward to your presentation and you can start whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I hope you all had a blessed and reflective Memorial Day weekend. And thank you this year for affording me the opportunity to address you twice, once for 10 minutes at this meeting, then again in June on the 24th. What I'm going to do today is try to frame the department a little bit, talk about some of the qualities and services that we offer, especially in the environmental health and the clinical services areas. And then next month I'm going to talk more about some of the outcomes, the metrics in the mortality and morbidity here in Kent County. And of course, I'll follow kind of the recipe that you've set forward. You'll see addressing the alignment with board priorities, the strategic goals of the department, key performance measures, some significant accomplishments, and a look ahead. So our mission, and I'm very proud of our mission statement at the Health Department. I think it's one of the most succinct that you'll find anywhere. It's nine words. Love it. And I hope that our staff can all memorize that. That's very important to me. It's serve, protect, and promote a healthy community for all. And each one of those words is very intentional. And at the very least, I want to make sure that the first and the last words really resonate with everyone on our team. Serve all. That's what we do here at the Health Department. Our vision statement is your vision statement because I think that it's really critical that we're going to have a Kent County that continues to be a place where people can live, work, and play. Being forward-looking, intentional, being inclusive, being a place that is the economic engine for West Michigan. It's really important that we don't have undue burden from excessive disease, illness, injury, the sort of things that hold people back from maximizing their potential and reaching what they're capable of reaching. So that's part of our objective as the Health Department is making sure that the health of our population is strong and capable of reaching that vision. So what do we do? And this is just a quick sampling of the services that we offer at the Health Department. In fact, I'm embarrassed I forgot some, like Hearing and Vision isn't listed here. It's a big program. You'll often hear about and see about the Health Department in the news. Things like here on TV 13, Alcohol Awareness Month was last month, and Sharon Schmidt, one of our health educators, was there. Trying to encourage people to make healthier decisions, keeping things in moderation, making good choices as it relates to alcohol. Or you'll see us talking about things like mosquitoes and trying to empower people to protect themselves and their families from things like Eastern equinecephalitis and West Nile virus. Talking about things like whooping cough, pertussis, measles, other infectious illnesses that are out there in the community, what they're doing and how people can protect themselves. But whatever we're talking about, whether it's alcohol, or bugs, or germs, we're always keeping the person as a center of that. That's our goal in public health, and especially the most vulnerable persons in our community. We do have five divisions at the Health Department. Community Clinics, where all of our immunization programs are located, women, infants, children, STI, tuberculosis. Community Health Strategy, which is the division where our collaborations and convenings are centered. It's a small division, only about a dozen people or so, but it's a mighty division. It's a division that does all the community health needs assessing, the community health improvement planning in partnership with our hospital partners. The work with data analytics and trying to make sure that we're working on things that really matter in the community in partnership with all the other partners that we have out there. Community Wellness, which has all of our infant and children programs, our health education programs like Life Skills, where we're in the schools, middle schools, and high schools, trying to empower those students to try to avoid addictive materials, whether it's drugs or alcohol, delaying those things at the very, at the very least. Children's Special Healthcare Services, where we're providing support to those families that have a child or children that have really complex medical conditions that maybe those families weren't prepared to, to deal with. Lead Case Management. And then Environment Health, where our food safety program is located, wells and water supplies and septic systems, lead inspections, pools, body art, vector surveillance. I'll talk about some of those things in a moment. Then Administration, where our executive leadership team is located along with our epidemiological unit and public health emergency preparedness. So our department's strategic goals are, and I could share this strat plan with you if anyone would like to see it, but in summary, those top five goals are to enhance customer service and client experience. I feel like we were doing really good in that area pre-pandemic, and then we had to tear down a lot of things to rebuild them to meet the emerging, evolving needs of the community. Now we're really focusing on how do we build back the customer experience and make sure that we're staying client-centered in all the things that we do. Advancing department standards, and that could be through accreditation, national accreditation, state accreditation, which we both hold, but we want to make sure that we're meeting or surpassing those standards. Things like Public Health, Project Public Health Readiness, which is a national accreditation for emergency preparedness. In fact, I'm happy to announce that a couple of weeks ago, we received that accreditation from the National Association of City and County Health Officials. Supporting the Health Department's workforce. There's been a huge turnover in the public health workforce over the course of the past few years. Nationally, it's something like 47% since 2017, 2018. In our own department, it's about half. We track pretty closely with that. At a recent all-staff meeting, I asked everyone who started after February of 2020, when COVID arrived, to raise their hand. About half the room, about half the rooms. We have a lot of young professionals, a lot of people that continue to need professional development and really to be brought into the Kent County culture. Improving consistent communication between the department, our partner organizations, and members of the community. I think we're doing some good work there. I have a very active presence on social media and in the community. I think that Lori Latham and Christine Anthony and the team there is doing a great job supporting us. Our newsletter is one of the most viewed out there. And then recognizing staff and public health success. And I want to take a moment here to do a little bit of that. These two are Sue Sefton and Barb Hawkins-Palmer, and together they have 78 years of experience at the Kent County Health Department. Really remarkable. And of course, they're both more than eligible to retire. When I asked them, why haven't you done that? They both say because we love working with kids and families. It's a calling. It's a vocation. It's such a part of who they are that they really can't imagine doing anything else. Sue, in fact, works with moms and babies, and she is now providing care for a third generation of them, literally, where she has cared for the mom as a baby and the grandmother as a baby in the early part of her career. It's remarkable. So food inspections. Here in Kent County, we have about 2,600 licensed food service establishments. We inspect most of them twice a year. Some that are seasonal only get one inspection a year. So in total, in 2024, we did about 4,200 routine inspections. The second column there is the number of follow-up inspections, which you see was almost 1,200. So 1,200 times, there was something that was significant enough that required us to go back. It could have been food was not being stored properly. There could have been a structural deficiency in the kitchen with the plumbing, with a cooling unit. There could have been an infestation of roaches or something of that, of that nature that needed to be corrected. We also do almost 700 temporary food licenses, which I think is really cool. That's all those festivals and all of those events that we see down here on the plaza and elsewhere, where they're setting up a food tent for an event. Really speaks a lot to the culture here in Kent County. And then pre-opening inspections, 377. Those are required whenever we have a new establishment coming into the county. And then the last two columns are complaints and foodborne illness investigation complaints. So a lot happening there to make sure that those establishments are safer to dine at. Quickly go through a number of the things we do in Environment Health, other things we do. Lead inspections, in 2024, over 200 lead inspections. 74 were, we call LIRA, a Lead Inspection Risk Assessment. And those are done in homes where we have identified a child with a high level of blood cons, lead in their blood, above the action level of five. 54 times, we had a clearance inspection, and then 73 times, we were inspecting or doing a screening of a home where there was a lower level of lead in the child's blood. So a lot of work being done there to make sure that our homes are safer for kids to live in. Swimming pool inspections. Big thing this time of year. All the pools want to get open. We have about 363 public pools here in Kent County. Some of those are the community public pools. Most are the pools that are privately owned but are offered to the public, like in a hotel. All of them need an annual inspection. Of course, all the ones that are outside, campgrounds, community pools, they need inspection before they can open for the summer. So that's a big, a big push by our team right now. You can see here that we had 176 follow-up inspections for pools during 2024. So again, those are instances where we found something that was significant enough to require a second visit. Perhaps the water quality was, was out of balance. Perhaps it was too cloudy, cloudy enough so it's unsafe so that if a person was drowning in the bottom, you might not be able to see them. Perhaps it was a physical problem, a filter not working properly. Perhaps the enclosure didn't have a self-closing doors, the sort of things that are important for keeping toddlers out of that pool area. So a lot of corrections being made to make sure those pool environments are safe, safer for the community. In 2010, the state passed a law requiring inspections and licensing for body art facilities. We did 103 inspections of the routine, the brick and mortar sorts of body art facilities that year. 95 inspections of temporary body art operations. These would be at trade shows and at community events, sort of mobile things that pop up. And you can see here that we had a total of 63 instances where there was something that caused a follow-up here. So again, we're finding things and we're responding to them to make sure that those environments are safer. With body art facilities, often there is something that maybe is a higher risk for bloodborne pathogens. Perhaps there's a sharps or a medical waste issue. Perhaps there's disinfection, sanitation issue that needs to be corrected. And then finally, well finals, annual totals. You'll see that on average, we do about 600 well permits a year. Well finals are the inspection that follows after a new well is installed, making sure that it was instructed properly and that the water quality is, is safe for potable use. You'll see here, this kind of follows what's happening in the economy overall. 2020, we had, of course, a low number of well finals conducted, and that's, of course, because of COVID. In '24, '23 to '24 fiscal year, we saw a dip there again. We think that's because of inflation and higher interest rates, that new housing startups took a little bit of a, of a dip there, and so new well permits and finals also dipped. And then finally, community clinical services. And this is all of those services offered within our Health Department locations, such as STI testing and treatment. And '24, we had over 4,200 visits for people seeking help with what they believe was an STI. We identified about 328 cases of chlamydia, 151 cases of gonorrhea, and there are also things like syphilis and other things that we identify. In many cases, it might just be a UTI or maybe something else that requires the assistance of nurses or our medical staff to navigate people to the help they need to get, take care of their, their STI. The next four are all about HIV and chronic infectious viruses. And this is an area where I think we've made a huge improvement over the course of the past 30 years. Back in the mid-'90s in Kent County, we were losing 30 to 40 people a year to AIDS. Now it's three to four people a year to AIDS in Kent County. It's a huge improvement, and it's largely because testing is much more readily and rapidly available. Things like PrEP and other pre-exposure prophylaxis are available to people. And of course, treatment is much, much better, and the availability of treatment is much more widely accessible. So in this program, not only are we testing, but we're also navigating people to the care they need if they are positive and the counseling they need. WIC appointments and in the produce connection, we distribute a lot of support for, for moms and families that are in need of, of nutrition supplement. We also do a lot of work to, to encourage and to coach new moms into breastfeeding, and the rate there of 79% is higher than what we would see in a, in a comparison sample in the population. So we are getting moms to, to at least attempt to start breastfeeding. Active TB cases, 12 that were identified and treated in 2024. And we often think of TB as something that was the 17th and 18th century, which it was. In fact, it was, I think it's one of all, one out of seven of all people who lived before 1900 died of tuberculosis. It's a huge cause of mortality historically for, for people. Since the 20th century and antibiotics and testing, we've really brought that number way, way down, but we still see tuberculosis in the community. Every year, we test hundreds of people for it. We usually identify dozens of latent cases, and then we had 12 cases that were active that required some pretty intensive treatment and surveillance to make sure that they are getting over that infection and not spreading it to others. Over 12,000 vaccination appointments in '24 with over 50,000 total vaccines administered. We have a travel vaccine clinic here in Kent County where we administered over 1,200, served 1,200 persons in that clinic, which really makes us unique here. Not many health departments, not many doctor's offices actually provide travel vaccines. We have here in West Michigan, a lot of travel to places in the world where they require things like a yellow fever vaccine. And we're one of the few places where, where people can get that sort of care. And so it's a huge asset to the community. We especially get a lot of mission trips and groups that are going to remote places that need those vaccines before they can travel. And so they're very thankful for being able to access that with us. Then we have 93 provider offices that are partners in the Vaccines for Children Program, which provides them a vaccine and reimbursement so that they can provide that care to their clients, so that those eligible children can get vaccines with, with no, at no cost to them. So that's, I think I'm past my 10 minutes and I apologize. I always take a couple extra. And again, next month, I'll talk more about some of the other mortality and morbidity measures in the community, and a little more about our community wellness program in particular, which does Hearing and Vision and all of those moms and babies programs that we're really proud of. So thank you for your time, and I can take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Dr. London. Appreciate that overview. We all are learning about all the things that the Health Department is responsible for. It's a big organization with lots of responsibilities, and I feel like with these presentations, I always learn a little bit more about what you guys do. So appreciate that overview. How many employees are, are under the kind of umbrella of the Health Department currently?
Yeah, in terms of total, FTE, where are we at right now? About 270 FTE.
Okay. So a little over 10% of the county employment?
Right around 10%.
I think we're the, after the sheriff's office, we're the largest department.
Yeah, great. Okay, any committee members? Commissioner Bujack has a question.
Thank you, Chair. Adam, thank you for the presentation. You said there was five county facilities. I'm aware of the main headquarters, the one on the north side with the sheriff's station, and one in Kent. What is there, where are the other ones?
I think I said five. We have the Fuller location.
Fuller?
We have North County. We have South County, and we have the Sheldon location, the Human Services Complex.
Where is that?
We have four locations. It's on Franklin and Sheldon, south side of town. It's the, county's Human Services Complex.
Oh, okay.
And we have a small clinic location in there. And otherwise, it's north, south, and the main location on Fuller, which, as everyone probably knows, it's under renovation this year. So we're trying to push people to those other locations. We expect that by this fall, we're going to have that renovation work done, and we would certainly like to have everyone there for a, a red ribbon cutting celebration to really show off to the community what's available and what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Hennessy.
I have a couple of questions on different issues here. Sometimes when you go into food establishments, you'll see certificates that they haven't had any violations. Are you still issuing that kind of a reward to people?
You know, that's one of the great projects that we, we kind of paused during COVID that we're looking to restart. Yeah, and so we had some pretty high criteria to get that food service award. And, you know, I, I think, and I think the research bears out that there's a couple ways to approach it. One is to really show those establishments that have had problems. But I think that, that negative approach doesn't really work well. I think it's more effective to show off and celebrate the ones that are doing really, really stellar work. And so that's where we'd like to get back to. In fact, you see many of them, they're dated from like 2019 and 2020 before, because they're very proud of those, and of course, it's great advertising for them as well. So you'll be seeing some more of those with current dates very soon.
So is there an easy way for people to, you have all these statistics online, but is there an easy way for people to look up, oh, we're going to this establishment tonight for dinner. I want to look up and see what kinds of violations it has. Is there an easy way to do that?
Yes, and there is a link on our website that will take you to.
Directly to it.
Yes, and you can search them by name when you go there.
Okay, I think that's good for, you know, people to be aware of as well.
Yeah.
And if I can continue. I'm, I'm impressed that you have a 79.3% initiation on breastfeeding, and of course, Sue and Barb have had so much to do with that. Do you have statistics on where things stand at about six weeks or even six months?
I, not at my, top of my mind right now, but I can find out for you. That was initiation that you saw there.
It's initiation, that's right.
But we can certainly find out for you where things stand with the population that we work with, also compared to some of the others. So we can look at both, like what the national, what the countywide average is, but then we also should look at sub-populations within the county to identify where we're trending overall. So I can provide all that data for you.
Yeah, I, I know that the state WIC office has done a lot of support and education at the local level, at our county level, plus what we do locally.
Yeah.
And what particularly leads. And so I'm just curious as to how that carries through, because there's been a lot of effort put forth here.
There has been, and the benefits are tremendous.
So what impact have we had so far on federal budget cuts?
Watching very carefully. I, I think that all of us in, in healthcare in general are watching very carefully and trying to make sure that we are on top of what the actual reality is. Of course, we, you know, right now until the federal bill goes through the Senate, we won't know exactly what we're looking at or what the consequences are, or how the community and people are going to respond to that. I think there's a lot of unknowns right now that we're trying to understand. We're looking also at things like, you know, the refugee resettlement program, which is largely gone now, and what the future looks like for that, because it's going to need to come back in some way, shape, or form as individuals from other parts of the world in the future come to us through the refugee program.
Okay.
This is a, it's a large conversation across a variety of topics. Strong beginnings is another area that we're watching very carefully as it relates to the, all the Head Start stuff.
Okay, so I, I assume that we're, you know, you're working with the county and our lobbyists in DC and everything else, every way possible.
There's one, Adam, maybe two cuts that we've actually experienced in smaller programs. One was the partnership with Grand Valley to study waste, and then the other one, wasn't it a refugee-related type thing?
Yeah, there was the refugee resettlement program, and that was cut. And we have, we still have some refugees that were, that arrived prior to the cuts that we're still providing care for, but they will phase out within the next few months. And then that program will be gone entirely. We have openings that we are repurposing, that the nurses and the staff in that program, so we're not going to lose any positions because of that one. And the other one, as Al mentioned, is the Waste Water Surveillance Program, which was funded under the COVID grant funding. And, and that one was going to continue for another couple of years, but it's phased out now. So that will probably by the end of the summer be, be done entirely.
It's interesting because one of my Grand Valley State University alumni received his magazine, still comes to our house, so I get to read it, last week, and they were highlighting that program in its cooperation with the Health Department. And here it is, you know, it's being highlighted in something I received in the house last week, and now it's, you know, on its way out. I think it's such an important program.
Yeah, I hope that somehow, some way, that technology is built upon going forward. So I think there are a lot of promising things that came out of it. We found some very practical things that, that helped us, one of which was when there was a, an early outbreak of norovirus happening at the veterans zone. And we picked up on that real quickly because of this, and were able to work with them to prevent that from becoming something bigger.
Yeah, I think the new, the magazine article also highlighted a COVID strain, a new strain of COVID that was first identified locally.
Mm-hmm, that's true, yeah. And in other parts of the country, they found things like polio, and that was New York City where they found some, some hits on that. And so again, early indicators, so you know kind of within a neighborhood or a zip code what might be spiking, so you can do some preventative messaging and provide some resources people need to.
Well, thank you very much.
Hopefully, it continues that we learn from.
I hope that, you know, I hope that that can be resurrected to its full strength as a program, because it's really important to public health and to, to doing, you know, what your department does, and it does very effectively. I'm impressed with everything I've seen over, over the years and the growth that has occurred within your department and its outreach, number of people who are reached. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hennessy. Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. I do have two questions. One's a follow-up to your answer to Carol's, which is about the refugee program. Like what services exactly were provided, or like why was it under Health and not under a different department?
So we were a sub-recipient of that. It goes through the state of Michigan and then to the primary refugee resettlement agencies. And then we work with them to make sure the health screening happens and that, you know, we test her pregnancy and HIV and make sure they were up to date on all vaccines and things like that. Help to navigate them into a primary care home for both physical and dental and whatever other services they need.
Okay, that's actually kind of nice. And then my second question was just about all the different services you provide. I'm assuming there's a spectrum and accessibility from free to some kind of fee. Like what does that spectrum look like?
So it really depends on which program. In the clinic, it's, we do bill insurance and Medicaid.
Okay.
And we do have like the Vaccines for Children Program, which is free for eligible families. And so, but we really make a point of, we're not turning anyone away because they can't, they can't pay. If someone is there and they want a vaccine, we're going to, we're going to make that happen.
Okay.
In the environment health area, there are fees for permits, for licenses, for, for inspections, and that's all part of a, a fee schedule that this body passes.
Yeah, it's like most permitting and licensing.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Legrand has a question.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to thank you for your, the services that you offer for the sort of exotic vaccines. I have a son who's a world traveler, who's taken advantage of that, who needed some of these more rare vaccines, and it was just great to be able to get it at the Health Department. But then I had a question about the WIC payments and how that, what the Health Department role is in that. Does that take place at all locations? Does that take place at all locations? Is it just at the MDHHS building, or how?
At all of our locations.
Okay.
And interested moms can schedule an appointment with us, and, and we will work to set them up in the program. And there are some health screening stuff that we, like, you know, waits and things like that that we want to, to monitor, and we, you know, work with those families directly to help set that up.
Okay, so there's kind of like a support and monitoring that goes along with it?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, wonderful. Great, thank you.
I don't see any other questions, so with that, appreciate your presentation and appreciate all the work that the Health Department does to serve and protect our community, so keep up the great work, and we look forward to your follow-up presentation next month.
Thank you.
Thanks again for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is Board, from the Board Office, appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees. I'll let Administrator...
Yes, sir. Interview team completed interviews for the attached appointments and recommends approval of those individuals.
And thank you to Commissioner Legrand for spending some time. Her and I did a number of interviews for some kind of mid-year vacancies here, so we had some great candidates. Appreciate putting themselves forward for it, and we made some decisions and put it forward to the committee, and then it'll go, if it was approved today, it'll go to the full board at our next meeting, and then they will begin their service on, on those boards. So entertain a motion. Moved by Commissioner Legrand and supported by Commissioner Merchant. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Hennessy.
I noticed that the one position that's listed as consumer, but the person says that they're a dentist, does that qualify as consumer?
Commissioner Legrand.
We, this, this dentist is someone who does, she does not have a private practice. She is a traveling dentist. Most of her work is in nursing homes, a lot of low-income nursing homes and that sort of thing, so she's sort of a public health dentist. We did not have any actual consumers apply for this one, but because she was so closely connected to the population, the KCCA population, that was why we accepted her position, and I was very happy to have someone who's with expertise on oral health joining that group.
Thank you for the explanation. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion is adopted. Move on to Item Number Six, miscellaneous. Any commissioners have any miscellaneous? And seeing none, going once, twice. Okay, next item is adjournment. I'd just like to say thank you for committee for, everyone was here, all seven members day after the holiday. Commissioner Boujack's a little slower this morning than normal. He admitted, self-admitted. I, I'm not, you know, saying anything about him, but, so anyhow, appreciate everyone being here, and have a great week. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Legrand, supported by Commissioner Merchant. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Have a great rest of your week.